Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the George Rahm Little Theater at Brockton High School. Tonight, we're meeting for the Facilities Usage and Planning Subcommittee meeting. The time is about four after six o'clock, and I will establish a quorum. Mr. Homer?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
I'm here as well, and there's three of us, so we are good for a quorum. The first thing on our agenda tonight is discussion and potential vote regarding the proposed health center project at Brockton High School and any related procurement matters or documents. And I am going to call on Dr. Cobb's to give us an update as to where we are since the last discussion we had, which I think was almost a year ago at this point.
Yeah, actually, this, I checked with Mike Jakes from the Brockton Neighborhood Health Center, and right now, like, that's, I'm assuming that's why Attorney Mello is here, because it's really kind of held up in red tape and litigation and trying to, that's why we have tonight perhaps take a vote.
No litigation.
Sorry?
There's no litigation associated.
No litigation, I'm sorry, litigation, but just kind of some things we have to, again, Attorney Mello can speak to, but that's where, as far as I know, I think it's pretty much, the project is on hold until this, some decisions are made or votes are taken.
So have we completed the RFP process? All of that's done? And at this point, we're just voting on whether to put the modular structure on site?
No, so, so where it stands is, we've confirmed with the Attorney General's office that, you know, based on the conditions that we envisioned for the project, it wouldn't be the subject of, or there wouldn't be any construction procurement required. The idea is that it would be a modular building that would be placed on the property, it'd be owned by the organization that wins the bid, and just to be clear, you know, this would be the subject, what's contemplated is that it would be the subject of a, of an RFP for a land lease or, you know, some sort of agreement that would authorize the occupation of the space, of the ground, but the structure itself would be owned by whatever organization wins the bid. Under, it would be a 30B procurement, as distinct from a construction, public construction procurement process. So, and any, you know, I think the mic went a little loud all of a sudden.
No, it's okay, I can hear you better.
Okay. Any installation, utility installations and the like, it would be the same thing, and it would be, you know, organization-owned, private organization-owned, or whatever organization would, would be the recipient of the bid, or the awardee, if you will. So, we're in the process of putting, I think we're, it's fair to characterize it as being in the process of putting the finishing touches on the bid documents that would be published in connection with that underlying, you know, land occupation arrangement, or a land lease, if you will. We would, you know, vet that internally with the city as well, and there's a couple of moving parts, obviously, with the high school construction or renovation project and the MSBA process kind of looming in the future, there are certain moving parts, and, but I think that the first step with respect to this proposed health center project is to, you know, put it before this committee and get the committee's approval of, you know, taking the next step and putting it before the full committee. There's not, there aren't any, at least tonight, any bid documents to vote on or anything that, like I said, I, it's, we're pretty close, I think we just want to, you know, first of all, based on any input this committee, this subcommittee has, obviously fold any required terms into the bid documents and also vet it with the, with the city procurement officials and make sure everyone's on board with the final language, but, but I think for purposes of tonight, we just wanted to get, get it back before a subcommittee so that, you know, the, the full committee can, you know, that we can take steps towards putting it before the full committee, so it can act in its discretion, basically, and decide what it wants to do, and, you know, procedurally, in terms of any, any votes that might be required, that, that would be a conversation for the full committee, but I think we wanted to get the project, first of all, the subcommittee updated and also the project back on the, on the docket, so to speak.
So, I don't mean to sound confused, so what, so next steps would be to send out the RFP?
Yeah, right.
For, for whomever wants to take advantage of that for this project. Then after that, the RFP would be brought to the bid review for a full vote, for whoever we decide on, whoever's gonna, whoever we're gonna accept for the RFP in that process?
Yeah, and like I said, there are a couple of moving parts, and, you know, there are, procedurally, there might be a couple of steps in between, but I think technically, the next formal step would be the committee's approval to issue the bid documents. And that would be a full committee decision.
I have several questions, but I do want to open up to my colleagues on the floor, because I'm, I would imagine they have questions as well.
Thank you. Is there any question or change in terms of where that trailer would be placed on property in terms, last time we spoke, and in case anyone's watching or needs a refresher, I think the last time this was up in the spring last year was, the visual of representation was right outside the fine arts building on the grass, sort of between the fine arts and the pool, and is there any question, is that school property, and that's managed in, that's school facilities, that's not city property or anything like that? So that is all under the purview of the school committee?
As far as I know, yeah, that is the school property, that, it's the same location that we talked about last.
Okay, so no change in location or anything like that? And then Attorney Mello was just speaking about utilities and things as well, too, and I think, if I understand correctly, does that mean that the winner of a bid for use of the land would be putting their property, their trailer there, but they would also incur the costs of attaching utilities to that facility that doesn't?
That's right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. How would this project affect the reconstruction of the high school moving forward, the MSBA? Like, is this location gonna hamper anything? Would they, you know, look at us and say, what are you guys doing? We're trying to come up with a plan with the high school, and we're leasing land, so like, how does that affect any?
At this point, obviously, we don't know what the MSBA will come up with with their final decision for, you know, moving forward, once the feasibility study is completed. As it is right now, it, you know, from the earlier drafts of what we proposed to do with the building, was we, we're gonna put a stem wing on the end of the fine arts building, which will go out to where that automotive shop is, so it goes out in that direction, but not, not across the Brockton lot, so it would not be in the way, you know, of any proposed construction on the high school. It may take up some space for the laydown area for the construction site for the, for the contractors, but we'll, we'll work that out in, in the future, so, you know, it's, it's not in a place where we would have to move it, or it would be in the way of the construction, because, again, we still don't know if they're going to remodel this building as it is, add on to it, or propose to build another high school, or two high schools, so we, it's very early in the, in the process yet, but as it stands right now, no, it's, it won't be in the way.
Yeah, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but pre-feasibility study, I mean, it's, things are too fluid, really, to even, to, I think, fully gauge, you know, what, because it, you know, as I understand it, any, any and every option is, you know,
Still on the table.
On the table, so, you know, and I don't know that there's a concrete plan about specific improvements that has been developed to the point where, you know, you can reliably say that's, that's what's gonna happen.
Another question is, you know, if the state comes back and says, I mean, do we plan, or do we see anything in the future to actually have them part of the, the construction phase of the, of the high school? Like, being inside of the, the building instead of being a separate building? And then also, twofold, is if you look at, if the state does come back and says, you guys need two high schools, are we gonna be looking at putting another bid out to have two locations to have a health center? And whoever gets their bid, are they open to that option of saying, we're gonna have two locations instead of one, if it does happen that way?
Certainly, in the MSBA documents, as far as, we just recently had a, a meeting to discuss what they'll cover and what they won't cover, you know, health facilities inside the school would definitely be covered, nurses' offices, et cetera. A separate clinic, you know, where we could have the space, and we could lease out the space inside the building as well as we are, as we're considering the land with it right now, so that's an option, but those, those things are covered under the MSBA reconstruction.
And then, last question, I mean, I know it's a health center, but when we, you know, on the city side, school side, when we put out that RFP, would the services actually be rendered in that language? Meaning, like, if we wanted, you know, the health center to provide dental, mental health, which is big, besides just, you know, a regular physical? Is that something that we can actually write into the RFP that these are the services that we're looking to have provided to our students?
Right, right, I, yeah, I think that's, it would be fair to put into our RFP documents any terms pertaining to services that we, we want the successful recipient to provide, and if, you know, I'm happy to talk offline with you, Tony, about, or, you know, to the extent you have any thoughts on that, you know, I'm all ears, if, if you want certain language. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to put, put this before, vet this with this subcommittee before we distribute the final drafts of the, of the proposed bid documents, so that we could capture any desired terms that any members of this subcommittee would like to see incorporated into the, into the draft.
All right, thank you.
I'm actually with Mr. Rodriguez on that one, I would, only because of the fact that when they mapped it out to us originally, it was, there were rooms designated for certain services, and so I think that's, honestly, I think that's a good idea for us to understand what types of services and have them, if we can, have it outlined in the RFP, if possible. The other question I had is, I could be wrong about this, but I think it's, was it Randolph High School? Did Randolph just do this?
Yes, we ran off with the latest one.
Okay, that's what I thought, and is it conceivable for us to actually be finished with this project before we even break, like, this particular project, before we even break ground for what would be the new high school or a version?
Very much so, the feasibility process is two to three years down the road, you know, so it could be five years before we break ground to actually start the construction of the high school.
Yeah, okay, and in the interest of complete transparency, this is another neighborhood health center, correct? It's gonna be neighborhood health that's going to be sponsoring it?
Well, again, it would be the subject of a procurement process, I mean, any organization would be entitled to submit a proposal, and those proposals would need to be reviewed in accordance with the criteria that we enumerate or, you know, set forth in the bid documents, so.
I just remembered Sue Joss doing her, you know, that's, that's who we heard from, so my assumption is that's who was going to be the health center, so I just wanted to make sure and see if my colleagues had heard anything different, but I thought it was going to be them procuring the land and doing the modular building to put another one of their sites up here at the high school. That was my understanding.
They would most likely be one of the bidders, yeah, they would have to bid, though, if we're gonna go out to an RFP process, they would have to bid and, and be the accepted bidder, which is not necessarily the lowest bidder, but the accepted bidder, as you know, so.
Mr. Homer?
Sorry to come back around with a new question, but is there anything in terms of the length of time for a contract or use of land or anything like that that we would need to consider? Is it intended to be like a, like a, I know it's a trailer, I know it's not a permanent structure that's being put on the land, too, but in terms of, like, preparing a proposal or something like that, do we have to consider the length of, a length of time for occupancy for that spot, or is it something that, should something arise with construction or renovations on the backside of the building, if that needed, if that trailer or structure needed to be moved to a different spot on the property, is, does that have to be sent to a completely new RFP or a new bid for a different piece of the land? What's that process like in terms of marking out a footprint for a building and possibly having to adjust the position of the trailer from where it is in the back?
Yeah.
Is that something that we would have to build into the proposal?
That's, it's an excellent point, and it's one we've considered, and I think the, the draft to date addresses that issue and gives us some latitude, which I, I think we need to secure for ourselves, given, you know, the moving parts that, that exist with respect to the proposed, the high school project and what the future may hold, so that would be, one of the things we would do in the bid documents is include a proposed agreement, and that's, we would include terms and, in fact, have in the draft that we have, which I said, which I mentioned is very close to, to being a finished product, would include language that would give us latitude in our regard, so, but it's, it's a prudent and astute point.
I would just be careful in considering how much we try to write into an RFP, because you, you may not get a bid or anything, but.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You have to, you know, in fairness, yeah, obviously, we have to plan for contingencies, but I think the RFP is different from the actual contract that we sign, and we could certainly negotiate the contract that, that's fairly equitable for both sides, but in the actual RFP, I think you want to be careful how long and detailed you get as far as, you know, what, too specific, I guess.
And is it safe to say, again, this was my assumption from our last meeting, that this project is going to be funded by the recipient of the approved RFP? There's not any monies that are gonna come out of the city or the school system?
Yes.
Right, the, the construction would be funded and owned by the successful awardee.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, that, which is a good point, it's, and it's an important point for purposes of the analysis of the application of the construction procurement requirements. That's one of the issues that you would look at, among others, so, in determining whether a construction process or a physical improvement is subject to public construction procurement requirements as one of the conditions you'd consider, so it's, it's a good point.
Mr. Rodriguez?
This is more for Dr. Cobb's. Do we have an actual plot plan as far as how much space, how much land they're gonna need, and, you know, how big is the, the trailers, at one floors, at two floors? I know some of these trailers they have on two floors, so how much space do they actually need?
Again, that's what we write into the RFP for how, how much space we need, how many offices, what type of services. I believe the initial thought were, it's a single level trailer, you know, but, but big enough to house, I think it was eight officers or something, for, you know, clinician, so.
I think the bid documents would definitely include.
Yeah, it would be in the bid documents.
A plan of land, and then it would invite proposing parties to submit plans that would depict the modular structure that they would propose to.
Exactly, we could request the submissions for whatever product they were gonna use and what company they buy it from, and that, that we could certainly put that in the bid documents, so.
And, and that's, you know, my thought now, I guess if, if further internal vetting suggested a different approach, if we want to put a plan about, you know, that, that would depict the modular unit that we want there, but I think that, you know, we could talk about that, I think it's, that we probably would go with the former approach, here's the land in question, and, you know, let us know what you propose to install there. It's gotta be a modular building, and it's gotta include utility connections that you would own, that would be separate from our space or our connections, and that could be removed, because that's one of the other important terms, is that this, what's being installed could be readily removed.
You know, that's something, again, in the specification for the RFP, is like, those, those things, you understand, even though it's a modular unit that can be moved, it's gonna be connected to permanent utilities, like sewer, water, and electricity, and whatever fuel source they'll use for heating, which probably be like electricity, I'd imagine, but, so it could be moved, but not necessarily easy, if they want to move it to another place on the site, they'd have to bring any utilities again to the new site, so.
So to understand, so we're not actually doing a land carve-out? It's, you know, our property, so it's, you know, we're looking for a health center to be placed at Brockton High?
Right.
And here's the parcel of land location, how much space do you need to make this happen, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Right, right, and, you know, one of the questions that, you know, might arise in a situation like this, and this is probably something that, you know, needs to be discussed internally, again, but I think that's the understanding, Tony, is that, you know, this isn't space that we would, that the school committee would relinquish any control over. And I know that if, if the determination were otherwise, and there was a, there was a conclusion that, well, technically, in order to lease this space, you would need to actually, you know, relinquish your control over, over the spaces, as, you know, under Section 15A, Chapter 40, you know, declare it no longer needed for its purpose, and now it goes back to city control, and then, you know, I know that would be a different, you know, well, feel free to comment on that, but I think that would probably, my sense is that would be a different conversation among the, the members of the committee. But I, I think the way I view it, it is space that could be directly leased from the school committee without the need for any vote to relinquish control over that, but obviously, if the committee were to relinquish its control over that space, then the flexibility it would have going forward in the future would be, you know, more limited, so.
Dr. Cobb's? You, I think, were here for the original presentation when we first heard about this, and, you know, I hate to put this on you, but I'm gonna ask you, is there anything drastically different from what we heard the first time around? Is there anything that has changed in this process over time, or is it as was presented back then?
No, as far as the actual installation and the units and, and, you know, the physical, the logistics of it, no, there's nothing really different in, in the actual products to install, so it's just a matter now of, there's a little bit more red tape to kind of go through to.
But I, just, yeah, but just to be clear, I mean, but I think the, whatever plan was proposed originally, you know, this is the subject of a procurement process, and, you know, anyone's invited and welcome to submit a proposal, so I just want to be clear about that, it's not, you know, I know the, there was at one point in time a contemplated project discussed, that's not, this would be publicly, you know, procured, so there could be competing offers and the.
Same concept, more competition.
Yeah, essentially, the concept is the same, that's the answer to your question.
Yeah, that's, yeah, maybe, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to make it too assume.
How we get there is.
Exactly.
Conceptually, yeah, that, I think the concept, you know, the, the concept is to put a healthcare facility on campus, basically to serve students of the high school and afford them more ready and, you know, accessible access to healthcare services.
Well, I mean, and, you know, I'm pretty sure my colleagues probably agree with this, that, you know, especially coming back from COVID, the mental health issues in all schools right now have, you know, risen, and so having something so close to the high school would be extremely beneficial, especially after what we've been through over the past few weeks. I just wanted to make sure the concept was the same, even though there may be more competition, just making sure that, you know, what was said, promised, is, is delivered, regardless of who delivers it, it's gonna be delivered.
And I'm glad you mentioned the Randolph example, because we can, in the course of making any final changes to the proposed drafts, again, which would be subject to the, the committee's approval and all that, but we could pull any helpful terms from any documents that govern that arrangement, so that's helpful to know, I wasn't actually aware of that, so.
Yeah.
And is that, is that within the school building, or is that outside of the school building in the Randolph?
I believe it's the same concept that we're going with.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Rodriguez?
On the RFP, are we actually soliciting bidders, or are we just, you know, putting out there and whoever comes to the door knocking? I mean, are we reaching out to?
As an RFP, we can, we can send it out to anybody, but usually, it's published in the, you know, for, for the bidders to, in the register, it's published, and we, we can, you know, there are people we can send it out to, like, Brockton Neighborhood Health is one of our community partners, make them aware that, you know, it's, it's in the register so they can, they can get the documents and bid. So, yes, you know, it could be Brockton Neighborhood Health, could be Brockton Signature Hospitals, it could be Good Samaritan, any of them that wanted to bid on, they could certainly find the documents in the register and bid, but we could also send it out to those people as well, so.
All right, no questions.
Any other questions? Okay, so basically, we're looking to, we're looking to vote on approval to issue, what did you say?
Yeah, no, I don't, I think it would, there's no need to vote on the issuance of any, any documents or anything, and I think the idea for tonight's purposes was to, to get it back on the docket.
Yep.
Get it back before the, the relevant subcommittee, and, you know, to update where we are and, and get any thoughts on terms to include or issues to address in the bid documents. I think this committee could vote, you know, to continue the, the review process and recommend that the, the school committee address the issue at a, at a future meeting, or, you know, to update the, the full committee on the issue, but there's no, no formal action, I don't think, required at, at the moment.
I guess, Mike, one of the questions I have is, if we are talking about this now, and then the next time we talk about it is when we're looking at RFPs, I feel like there's a meeting in the middle we probably should have had, or am I missing something? Is, I feel like there's a lot of conversation around this.
I would think that you would, this committee would, as a subcommittee, typically, they make a recommendation to the next full committee, whether it's the bid review committee or to, again, to move forward in the process, to write the RFP, so the next time you would meet, I guess we would meet either the subcommittee to review the RFP, and then you would recommend it to the full bid review committee, or recommend changes before it goes, so we might have one or two more meetings before, I think you recommend it to the full committee. I'm not sure, does that make sense?
It, it does, that's why I was asking, I feel like there's a lot of conversations that are gonna be happening before we actually get to the RFP process, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, well, I guess it's, it's, it's in the discretion of, first of all, the full committee and the subcommittee, how to proceed, I'm not sure there's a.
If you want to proceed, I guess is the question.
I'm not sure there's a precise roadmap to it.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm sure, to some extent, every proposed project is handled, you know, slightly differently based on the circumstances, I mean, if, if it's the desire to actually review, draft bid documents, you know, as a subcommittee, you know, offhand, I don't have any objection to that, I think we could, we could.
I mean, I would, I would like to review the RFP before it's actually.
Vetted by the full committee?
Yeah, by the full committee, to make sure that we have, you know, the language in there that we're comfortable with as a, as a whole body, to make sure that we get the services that, that we want rendered.
Okay.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, so I was gonna say, too, I know it's been a while since we, the conversation came up about the need and what the services are, but I would, I would just, I'd like to just review, like, who did we consult with in terms of getting their, their advice about what services were needed, based on, like, you know, experiences within the school district, and what providers are seeing, and what the need is, and then make sure that that need is addressed by the people that are, you know, acutely affected by that.
You're right.
Agreed.
Also, I would, you know, if, you know, Dr. Cahill can be present as well, so she can update us on, you know, what they're seeing as far as in the health department. I know physicals was one of the biggest things, coming from the athletics of kids participating in sports, and like we said, you know, mental health is a, another big issue, so I would like to hear from her, her expertise in what she's seeing across the district and where the needs are, so we can actually address those.
Okay, yeah, that, that sounds good, and I think we could, we could do that, you know, readily.
Yeah, and that can come to the subcommittee, like, that can come right back to here, and that way, we, to your point, can kind of vet those things again, and it's been a long time since we talked about this last time, and so, even now, as I'm sitting here, I'm starting to refresh my own head, saying, oh, yeah, that's right, that's right, and to Mr. Rodriguez's point, I would, and Mr. Homer's, I would like to hear from Dr. Cahill. Mr. Rodriguez's point, I would, and Mr. Homer's, I would like to hear from Dr. Cahill to say it's on the rise, you know, originally we thought, and hypothetically, we thought we'd have eight rooms, but it looks as if now we're going to need more than eight rooms, and this is the reason why. Or everything's status quo, it's exactly what we thought. And just to make sure that we are addressing our, using Mr. Homer's word, our acute issues and where the need is.
Okay. Yeah, I think we could, we could set that up pretty promptly. And that's, that's fine with me. Dr. Cobb, or Aldo, did you have any?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. That sounds good. So we will come back one more time when we have more information in regards to what the RFP is going to look like and have Dr. Cahill speak, correct? Round agreement?
Yep.
What?
I just want to make sure she had the notes.
That sounds good to me.
So moving on to other business, do we have any other business to be discussed tonight?
The facilities rental packet that we received, I believe it was in February or late January. I know we didn't get a chance in the, last year to overlook that, if we can get that on the next
Yeah.
facilities meeting. And then also, I know we, you know, with the, our, with the, I can't even say the word. The, with the parks adjacent, I know we had, had a meeting and we approved for the superintendent to send a letter over to the parks department with the city ordinance. That's what I was trying to say, the city ordinance with our parks. I just want to get an update where we are with that, because if the parks department is, well, the school committee has to take a vote in order to let them do the maintenance during vacation weeks and summer weeks. So, I mean, I don't, I know a lot of the permits in the city are, are going out. So I'm not sure if the parks department is actually issuing these permits that school property. But if they're going to maintain that and use it throughout the summer, then the committee has to take a vote to authorize them to, to do that. So, if we can get an update on that as well.
To my knowledge, I, I'm not sure if that letter has gone out from the superintendent or not. As far as I know, from a facilities rental perspective, we're, it's status quo. We haven't, we haven't acquired any new rental properties and leasing, so it's, as it was so far, as far as I know.
Okay. We'll make sure we add both of those items. And Mr. Homer?
Is there any, any update on the status of, are we doing any work to the auditorium here in the high school with upgrades to the lighting or the sound system, anything like that? Are we, are we making any progress on?
Yeah, we're still in the process of, you know, the engineers and architects and, you know, we're still, it's still working its way through that process with our architect and the engineers as far as the, you know, they're still, still doing the structural analysis so they can, for the proposed lighting system, instead of we were going to do a lot of reconstruction, now it's pretty much, we're going to make sure that the building structural load will, will handle the new mounting of lights and fixtures to them. So that's, that's in the process of being worked through. So, we, we've met with them. It's been probably at least two months now since we all met to, to go through it. And we're waiting to get back the specifications from the, the structural engineers. So the architect can, can move forward with, you know, planning out and the drawings and full production of the blueprints.
The most important question is it, is it going to be done before Mamma Mia? I'm pretty sure that's, yeah, that's what I thought.
No. Best case scenario, we, you know, when the school year shuts down, we, we can start the construction and get it ready for, you know, the next school year. Because it's going, you can't use it while, once we do the construction, it, it'll be pretty much taken apart. So hopefully, we, you know, we have two months to get it together, more or less. That's the best case scenario. The way things are winding through with the engineers, again, the structural engineer is a holdup right now. We're waiting for their, their plan, for their load specifications to come back to us.
Fair enough. Thank you, Dr. Cobb.
You're welcome.
Anything else under other business we want to discuss? I have the other two points that we'll add to the next meeting agenda, but is there anything else? Mr. Rodriguez?
Any updates on the, the bus depot, as far as on the city side, where we are or?
Sure. My partner can speak probably to that better. We're in the process, we, we have an MOU signed with the owner. We're in the process of doing the environmental inspections and building inspections. So basically, like, if you're a homeowner buying a property, you're going to, you do a home inspection. So we're in that process now. Al can, can give you more details on that.
Yes, we have a firm that we hired that's doing the environmental work. They went out last week and the week before, took their core samples and walked the property to make sure that there aren't any, you know, contaminated waste or underground tanks. They get back to us. The MOU that was signed has now gone to outside bond council. So outside bond council will basically write up, you know, the amount of the loan and the purpose of the loan. I'm hoping that that will be back in time for the next filing, which is next Tuesday, I think, for the city council. They'll be on their agenda. So once the city council gets it, they will probably forward it to their finance committee. And that'll be where the open discussion comes on that piece. So it's progressing. Hopefully, hopefully there aren't any issues with the property. Once we have that back from the bond council, we'll ask the fire department and the building department to go and do their walkthroughs. But I don't think theirs will be as lengthy as the company that we've hired to go out there and do theirs. I'm sure Eddie Williams has been through these properties many times.
Okay. Now, do we have, is there any, you know, renderings that is mapped out as far as like how the property layout is going to be, you know, as far as paving, lighting?
We didn't do any.
We didn't get to that point yet, or?
Well, we didn't, we didn't have anyone draw anything out, but we have taken a, a Google Earth image of it. And I had someone in my office go through and calculate how many buses will fit, an entrance and an exit of the property, and the availability to park employees' cars there. So we can fit our hundred and roughly forty, you know, large and small buses there. We have five small vans. And there's enough parking spaces for about a hundred vehicles on there. We do need some additional parking, we think, for more vehicles, but we don't know if some employees will be doubling up when they come to work. But towards the rear of the property, adjacent to us, it looks like there's some unused land there. So we're going to look at maybe either getting some space to park cars or seeing if it's something that the city is willing to negotiate to take to put more veh, you know, more parked vehicles on.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Homer?
One more thing, that's all right. The Downey, the HVAC system and everything like that. I know it came up in one of our last meetings, too. Is that another project that we anticipate will start at the end of the school year and like during the summertime? Or is that something that is going to be working on during the school year and being updated?
Realistically, both, because it's, it's a lengthy project. We have to go in, in, in every classroom, in the common areas and the rooftop units to change out. So rooftop units can be done anytime during the school year. The unit ventilators in the classrooms, we have to go through. So they'll, they'll take a while. They'll probably be, the contracts will be working evenings and weekends or during, during the school breaks. So it'll be going on. It, it will not get done in two, two months during the school, the summer vacation. But hopefully, it starts this summer and we'll, we'll finish by the end of the school year, next school year.
Okay. Thank you.
Best case scenario. So it is moving forward. We're at the point where the, the engineering drawings, the specifications are about fifty percent complete. So we're, we're meeting with them probably every couple of weeks to get an update and ordering the materials. So it's, it's in progress.
Okay.
So the push is again, to start it as soon as the school year ends.
I think too, sorry, and second, second point, too, in terms of other, other buildings and things, we completed an upgrade of servers for technology, I think, for the, either on the city side or the school side. Is there a process by which we can work on either assessing the security systems in the school or upgrading the security systems in the school in terms of cameras and what, what we have available for that kind of stuff, monitoring systems and things in other buildings? I know we have stuff at the high school. I don't know what we have in all the elementaries and middle schools, but I wonder if that's something that we're working on right now.
Yes, actually, we are. We, we, we had a Cobb's grant that we're awarded for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere around there, so, to, to upgrade the camera server infrastructure so we can migrate our camera system away from the Brockton Police Department. So those servers are installed, they're completed. The migration is in progress. It'll probably last another two or three weeks. We, we have an order in for about twenty-six new cameras to add to our stock. So we'll be adding those at, during the summer and as, you know, so, yeah, it's in process. So the, the server migration, that, that and upgrade is probably about ninety percent complete. So we're just about ready to migrate over. We're, it's up and running now. We're doing a migration process.
Where are those cameras going to be?
Sorry?
Where are the cameras going to be placed?
Everywhere. So we're, because a lot of the elementary schools, particularly one in, in the corridors and in the cafeterias, same with the middle school. So all the common areas will be, you know, have cameras and outside, most of them already are outside of buildings already. So they'll be more internal. We can, you know, obviously, we can't put them in classrooms and in bathrooms, but corridors and common areas will be covered with more cameras.
What about the high school?
This, this high school has about two hundred cameras.
So, so Mike, I mean, I'm just curious.
But we're, we're going to add more. Actually, we're going to, it's a good question. We're going to add cameras in, in the elevators and we're putting cameras in the, in the, in the corridors, in the stairwells.
The stairwells was what I was actually getting at.
Pretty much covered already, but in, in this building, but except for those areas.
Okay. I was actually getting at the stairwells, so thank you. I was wondering if we were going to put any, any in the stairwells where it seems to be.
Yeah. So for some reason, they're not covered. We'll also be in the process of installing vape detectors in all the bathrooms in this building and we'll, and the Champion Building will be done. The wiring is pretty much complete for, we're starting to get those installed.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't believe you.
You sure?
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, then we've completed other business and there is nothing else to discuss right now. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, yeah.
Thank you. It's unanimous. Thank you all.